All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is July the 19th. We have a study session today on the City of Dearborn Heights Ordinance Number H dash two-two-dash-zero-two. It's an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights, providing that the Court of Ordinances be amended by amending Section 697 concerning the unlawful feeding of pigeons, gulls, and doves, and to expand it to address unlawful ground-feeding, unlawful feeding of feral cats or dogs, and unlawful feeding of pigeons, gulls, and doves. Now, to start off our meeting, I asked our Ordinance Director, Bill Dishoon, to start us off, give us a general summary as far as the, you know, that particular department obviously put together this ordinance, them and our city attorney, and just give us a direction as far as the outline and purpose of this particular ordinance. And the reason I'm having him do that first, because I know there's been a lot of controversy as far as why this ordinance is in place. And I just want to clarify that the city's purpose of this ordinance, actually, I'll let him clarify. So, Bill, you got the mic? Please move it as close as you can to you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Is that good? Okay. Good evening, everybody. This come up, and just for clarification, the target was not cat and dog specifically. They just happened to be included in that. What we're trying to do is try to amend the ordinance to address residents' concerns regarding ground-feeding because of serious rat issues that we're having in the city, as I'm assuming everybody is acutely aware, maybe not. In the last year and a half, we have responded to approximately 61 ground-feeding complaints, various in nature, and approximately 215 rat, rodent, vermin complaints throughout the city. We do currently have a community cat program that is being run through MHS. There are approximately 20 residents that have been through the community cat program, the TNR program that they offer. But our office is not aware of who these people are because of privacy concerns. I reached out to MHS. They would not provide that information. So I have no idea who these people are. The biggest concern of the department is residents feeding cats and attracting rodents, skunks, possums, and rats to their property, which can spread disease and illness amongst the cats and other animals that they commingle with during feeding. Additionally, these animals go onto neighboring properties and defecate, spray, and destroy residents' properties without their consent. The city's main goal with this amendment is to eliminate the amount of food that is easily accessible to the rodents from ground-feeding all animals, trust me, all animals, in the interest of public safety and health. So, and I can tell you personally, I know of a resident that's been feeding squirrels cookies. I mentioned it's the Corporation Council Miyaki. So it's not just cats and dogs. Dogs is enumerated in there as well. So, just for clarification, it's in the interest of public safety, the rats, rodents, skunks. I know in a neighboring city, they've had, they had a ground, a person was feeding cats in the ground. They had a skunk. They were trying to get some of the cats out of there, and there was a skunk feeding with the cats. So they will commingle and eat together. They spread disease, illness. Some people bring these animals into their home. And actually, just recently, we had a resident that had been feeding. We found out about it, and this lady, who is not certified, trained, or anything like that, has been feeding these cats. There is a bunch of traps at her home. She's got these cats on her property that nobody can care for now because she's in the hospital for doing rehab and stuff like that. So now these cats are running around. Nobody's caring for them. Nobody's taking them and getting them updated on the rabies shots. So it's just, it's just one that came up late last week, actually. So just for clarification, we're not specifically targeting cats.
So on the opposite end of the aisle, obviously, there's been some concerns from some residents and then also honestly, some organizations, including which I asked her to be here, and I could see that she's online on Zoom, Beth Frank, which I'll give her an opportunity to speak. And of course, some residents had concerns about this. And the biggest concerns that they had with this particular ordinance is, you know, they're all, nobody's, you know, there's not been any rat rights people have called or emailed or anything like that. So that part is a non-issue. And that's why I asked you to speak first, because I wanted to clarify for the residents that this is all about the rats and not, you know, how do we get rid of the cats or how do we do something with cats, dogs?
No, we're not trying, there's a huge benefit in having a community cat program and having them, if they do the spay and the trap neuter release back into their same environment, they set up camp there. They stay in that area. They keep other cats out of the area. There's a huge benefit to that program, but one of the concerns that come up was obviously the ground-feeding of the cats. And we have no way to monitor or manage.
As you are aware, Director, when we had that on the agenda a few meetings back, there was obviously a lot of concerns from residents that came in and were against this particular ordinance. As a matter of fact, as I recall, off the top of my head, probably one of the top two lines of people that were here to speak in regards to that, and that's why I decided to do a study session on this, so that people will have the opportunity to be able to speak, including Beth Frank and others. There's also Lisa Alawi that spoke quite heavily on this. She came and spoke that day, but she's out of town today, and many others. And I see the young lady here. I know she spoke before. So I'm going to give an opportunity to speak. But one of the biggest criticisms of this particular ordinance is the concern that we are doing something that's, you know, humanely not the right thing to do to not feed cats or not give an opportunity for cats to be able to eat and therefore get rid of them in an un humane way. And the other concern is a much more cost-effective way, such as trapping, sheltering. I'm sorry, they don't want like trapping, sheltering, and then eventually at the Humane Society possibly, you know, you call whatever you want to call it, but getting rid of the cats, let's call it that at least. And the other concern is starving of an animal indirectly. And I know your purpose is rats, but indirectly that will affect the feral cats and maybe dogs, and then we'd be starving them, and that's an unfortunate consequence of this. So that's a major concern. I'm going to give you an opportunity first to speak on it, and then I will give some of the council members an opportunity to speak. And then after that, I'll have some of the residents be able to speak on that. So if you want to answer, so again, just to repeat again, why committing to TNR if you're for or against that? Whether this is humane or not, which in my opinion, it's not humane for the cats and dogs, obviously. And starving of an animal is cruelty, obviously.
Right. Well, since you brought that up, why don't we talk about people being irresponsible as pet owners? Because that's part of the problem, and people that let their animals out. The issue is when you, when you start feeding, when you start feeding an animal, you become responsible for it. So I think that's being overlooked as well. I don't have an issue, I think I already said this, I don't have an issue with the TNR spay and our, you know, the SNR program in and of itself. I don't, actually don't, I can't think of a case, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, a case of where we've gone out where somebody is actually feeding cats, but they are. I mean, there's been some, and I take that back, there has been cases where I've seen people on their front porch just going out there and feeding cats on their front porch irresponsibly, and cats coming from the woodwork. The reality is cats are predators, and they're going to figure out where to get food from if people aren't feeding them. I don't remember the last time I saw a cat, you know, skeleton in a tree or in other areas. Most of the time when cats get eliminated, it's usually they get run over because they're out loose and nobody's responsible for them, right? So I understand that portion of it. The other problem that we have is we don't have the ability to manage people when they're doing it in their backyard. We can't see what's going on. Like I said, there's 20 people that are trained. I have no idea who they are through MHS. So, and no, I don't want, I don't want cats to starve. I want people to be responsible pet owners, right?
Right, because at one point, these cats were owned by people that were let go, obviously.
Yeah, generally speaking, and again, I think there's benefit to having cats that are, you know, they get TNR through MHS and they end up back, they drop them usually within a block or two of where they found them at to try to keep other cats out of the area, because you'll get a tom in an area, and their other cats won't come to that area because they're territorial. So, no, I don't want to see cats starving. And I do believe there's benefit in the program in and of itself. But it concerns, my big concern obviously is our inability to manage what's going on in somebody's backyard and the, not necessarily just rats, but rodents in general. Does anybody want a skunk because a neighbor is feeding, you know, cats in their backyard and nobody knows about it? And the next you know, you get sprayed or a raccoon, they carry disease, this temper. There's things they carry, things spread to humans, so.
Okay. Thank you. So let me start with the council members. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair, and thanks for setting this meeting up and Mr. Dishoon for coming. Just one caveat, it's not intentionally starving cats, and here's why I say. Because, so if you have a cat, your own cat, then you have a duty to feed it, take care of it. But if you're just putting food out and there are unfortunately a lot of stray cats, I know it's a good idea to catch the cats, spay or neuter them, and then possibly release them. But maybe you'll get like one out of 10 cats that are, you know, there are just a lot of feral cats. And I guess it's a balancing act, but we could all be required to have a bowl of cat food behind our house, you know, for any stray cats. It's not, it's, I think you're really adding to the problem with the having food out for a cat that's just living outside. And I've had, my family's had two or three cats. And you're correct, when they, when somebody feeds them, they'll keep coming around. And the issue is, I mean, if you could feed the cat inside, but once that food is out there, whatever's out there will eat it. We had a problem with skunks around our house at one time. And they'll really search for food wherever they can find it. So I, I think, is there any reason why we wouldn't want both approaches? So no feeding of feral cats outside and also do, you know, make sure we can do what we can for the spay and neutering?
Oh, we do, actually, we do do that. The issue we have is mostly a staffing issue. We will go out and trap when we can. We have, we have a list in the office. There's probably 10 or 12 people on it right now, and the animal control truck is very busy. Animal controller Bunker is here with me, just joined us actually, so he was on a late run. So we try to do the program as much as we can and try to get the cats there and let the Michigan Humane Society decide what's best for the cat. Sometimes they go to, they turn out to be farm cats. Occasionally, they're adoptable. I'm not sure how often that happens. And then the other ones are brought back after they're vaccinated against rabies, and they're brought back to within a block or two of the area that they were found. But the other, the other part is these people that are, I'm not saying everybody, don't get me wrong, don't read into this, but a lot of people, like the one I just spoke of where we had the issue last week, they're not doing it properly. She's not, this individual was not vaccinating the cats, not, they're not cared for properly. I think some were sick and emaciated and injured, but they're doing the ground-feeding. I don't, I would have to, I've got some pictures here. I'm not sure if it's okay. I'd have to ask Corporation Council Miyaki before I showed you the conditions, so I'm going to hold off on that. But these people aren't doing these things properly, and that's a concern. So you could potentially have somebody that's feeding the cats and doing the right thing, but not doing the vaccinations, not doing the spay-neuter-release like they should be and doing things properly. So, and I'm not saying everybody's like that, because I know there's a lot of people sitting here and on Zoom that have good hearts. But again, the other side of that is you got people, these cats are coming onto people's property and digging flower beds up and defecating. I've had cat feces in my yard a bunch of times. Don't let your cats out. I've had these discussions before with people, oh, mine's an outside cat. Not in Dearborn Heights. No, no, if you either have your cat or don't, don't let them out. Because they could potentially freeze to death in the winter if they don't have proper shelter, right? So we could go back and forth on that all day.
One other question, how often do you find a cat that's starved to death, that's emaciated?
I. Yeah.
So what I'm going to do, if you don't mind, Director, you can stay up there. I noticed a couple of your officers are here. Are you guys interested in saying anything before we go to the residents? Come on up.
Yeah, it's fine. So Officer ACO Bunker.
Gary, can we get Gary's opinion on whether or not the pictures can be shared? There's no identifiers, anything other than, other than the photos.
Director, is, is he interested in also speaking or just?
I think he's just here to observe, I believe.
Is this all the same picture?
It's three.
You know, Gary?
Yeah.
How about without showing the pictures, just general description what the picture is about? This way it doesn't, it stays private.
I'd like to see the pictures.
Yeah.
So no, okay, that's why I don't check.
Just describe in general, general what the picture is about.
Gary, can I describe them?
How far can you go?
No, without letting out who, names, addresses, or nothing.
Okay.
Just don't say, don't give information as to where.
No information.
Has arisen or, you know, the nature of the interactions as much.
Right.
Just describe the conditions of the property.
We were called out to assess the. We were called out to assess the situation at a particular resident. This was just last week. Had dealings with this individual before. Last time we had to do anything with the individual, she ended up having to surrender 12 animals that were being kept in her garage. This time, there were multiple animals removed. The conditions had declined greatly, feces, food everywhere in the garage and in the home. Animals were not taken care of. And the issue is, is that while for years, this particular individual has been a very good help, trapping, TNRing, obviously she had a problem releasing them, but this is part of the problem. A lot of your hoarders collect their animals under the guise of TNR. The last one I helped with in another city, we pulled 47 animals out of that house, and they had traps in their backyard.
But just to be fair, Officer, is that not, you know, secluded case where, and I'm not referencing this particular person. I'm speaking generally here, where somebody may have, you know, some sort of a, let's call it medical issue as to why they do what they do. I'll leave it at that.
It actually happens a lot more than you would think, especially in your elderly.
I would think, and again, with my little knowledge of this, I would think that'd be like the exception, not necessarily the rule. Because this ordinance is primarily for most of your everyday people that are feeding their cats. That particular case is extreme, obviously.
The ordinance itself isn't even for cats. The current ordinance, which is 6-97, I believe, specifically mentions pigeons and gulls. So when we have a situation where somebody is putting out types of food, whether it be bird seed, or I've seen cereal, I've seen cookies, I've seen bread, things like that, it's attracting other animals. And if you remember back in 2018, we had the three-foot Argentine black-and-white tigu that we caught down in the Brookside Sub. The caller that called us specifically stated when I got there, I opened my front door and it was on my front porch eating my cat food.
Right by my house.
Right. And so, but getting back to the ordinance itself, the ordinance isn't specifically for cats. It is in there, but it's specific, it's to help us alleviate a problem that's being created in the neighborhoods. People are putting out food, whether it be cat food, bird seed, other types of things, and they're attracting rats. They're attracting possums, raccoons, skunks, and I'm the one that has to go out to these calls. Specifically, there's one gentleman, there's one gentleman down on the south end. He called because he saw a rat in his neighbor's backyard. And before I went and knocked on the neighbor's yard to address the rat problem in his backyard, I wanted to take a look over the fence so that way I could know what I was talking about when I talked to him. As I walked into the caller's backyard, he had pounds of bird seed in his patio blocks, you know, the two-by-two patio blocks, in the cracks. And as I walked in there, I flushed about 12 squirrels out of his backyard. If squirrels are getting into it, you're going to have rats, and he's right across the street from the creek. You're going to have all other types of animals.
And I had the director speak in the beginning, and I just wanted to clarify that this is not about, you know, feral cats or dogs. This is more about how do we stop, how do we minimize the rat issue in the city? So at this particular point, what I'm going to do, unless any other council members had anything to say, I'm going to go ahead and go to, before I go to members of the audience, whether on Zoom or in person, I'm going to have Beth Frank, I spoke with her, communicated with her.
I did have one more thing.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I didn't know.
All right, never mind.
Okay. So Beth, you want to go ahead and give us your angle? I know you about to speak today, so go ahead. And then please state your name, city, I'm going to give, and this is the case because she's a little bit more knowledgeable on this subject. I'm going to give her about four, five, four, four and a half minutes.
Okay.
If you could do me a favor, Beth, please state your name, the organization you represent, the city you live in, and the street name. Lennarun?
I'm having trouble staying unmuted, but I'm here.
Okay, now we can hear you now.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to err, off-base, and it comes from a not a, not a clear, not having a clear understanding of community cats and that. Your feeding ban says about feral cats. Now, we call cats that live on the streets "community cats" because they include ferrets, they include friendlies. They could be stray cats, but most of them have been abandoned and thrown out the door. People moved and left them. That's how they got out on the street. So you may need to clarify your wording as far as are you talking feral cats or community cats? Because many times when you're looking at a group of cats, you can't tell if they're feral or not just by looking at them. As far as the feeding, the feeding should be done for a limited amount of time and the dishes picked up. It's, it happens a lot of times, people will put dishes out and leave them. That should not happen. That's part of the education that we want to do to show people how to do this the right way, to help the cats and to help the city. As far as the rat problem.
Wait, I'm sorry, Beth, one second.
Could she identify what organization?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Community Cats United, Inc.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Community Cats United, Inc. We have over 75,000 members in.
You got cut off, Beth. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You said 75,000 members. Was there something else you said because you got cut off?
Also in 50, all 50 U.S. states and 124.
Countries.
But, so that's another thing, is the education.
Okay.
How to feed. And when people are educated on it, so many times they say, oh, I didn't even realize that. And that takes care of that. The rats, interestingly, in Chicago, they have a program for community cats where people adopt them to keep rats away. The pro, that program is so successful, they can't keep enough cats in to keep the rats away. And it has been very successful. So having cats there doesn't bring rats in, it actually will keep rats out because cats will kill rats. You said you have a TNR program through Michigan Humane. What is that?
That's the Director, come on up.
Michigan Humane is the shelter that we contract with because Dearborn Heights doesn't have its own in-city shelter.
For getting TNR spay and neuters?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how much they charge?
I think it's included in our contract. The problem isn't getting it done. The problem is, is we don't have enough people, especially right now where we've got four guys, and right now the animal pickups have picked up. We're back and forth to the shelter all day. We don't have the time to go check and set traps.
Well, with this group that we're creating, you're not going to have that issue because we're going to have people that will be willing to go out and trap, transport to wherever we need to go to get them fixed and return them. So that should free up some time for you guys to do what you need to do because I understand that the number of animals being dumped on the streets now is increasing and it's horrible.
No argument.
But I was just trying to figure out how much it costs to see how much money would need to be raised, you know, to fund it or how much you're paying that we could maybe jump in and say, instead of you taking the cat in, we will do that for you and, you know, they'll send you the bill, just to see how this was all going to work. I will say along that line too that, and I haven't told anybody in our group yet, but I was working today with Bissell Best, Bissell Pet Foundation to try to get a grant to get some more spay and neuter done. And they've actually set up a separate portal on their site so that they will put our grant through in a different way than they normally do. So I'm hopeful that we're going to get something out of that. I'm just waiting to hear back. Let me see what, oh, and as far as the deterrents for cats in people's yards that they don't want them, New Orleans, Louisiana, actually has on their website a bunch of deterrents that you can use, and they provide some of the things that can be used in the yard to residents for free. They're not expensive things, and I don't recall offhand what they were, but it was amazing that a big city like New Orleans was doing this kind of thing. So this is something we can do anywhere, including Dearborn Heights. I, I know education is important, but these cats, we have to remember, they weren't there because they wanted to be. None of us want those cats out there.
Okay. Thank you very much, Beth.
Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
As far as the rabies vaccinations, when they're fixed, they do get a rabies vaccination one to three years. But studies have shown that those rabies vaccinations, the life of a community cat is not really equal to that of a regular own cat. So they are pretty much vaccinated for their life by one shot.
Okay. Thank you very much, Beth.
You know, she had some good idea, she had some good ideas, but I don't like the idea of people taking in their cats that they catch and then turning them in and the residents pay for it because we all know what's going to happen. People will just start taking their personal cats there, saying they found a cat, they're going to get, and we get billed for doing their spading or neutering or whatever they want to do, and they just bill it to the city. I don't like that idea at all. I mean, as a pet owner, that I am, I'm responsible for my animal. I took my animal in, it got neutered, gets all its shots when they're required, and they're licensed. And so I don't want to put that on the residents of the city for somebody else's, for doing, you know, doing somebody else's animal. You know, that's how I feel about it. I should not, or I should not, or the regular citizens should not have to fit that bill for people. Take care of your animal.
The other, Chair, if I may, the other concern I have is having, I'm not totally opposed to it, but just thinking in my mind, the other objection that I would have to having an outside entity coming into our city is them coming here and inadvertently taking somebody's cat and spay, neuter, release. You know, somebody's cat gets out. I don't know. Sure, it's a reputable organization, but my concern would be if our contract, the City of Dearborn Heights contract is with Michigan Humane Society, not, you know, community cat program or whatever. So if those cats are not taking, and I'm not saying they would do anything nefarious, not saying. so if those cats are not ta, and I'm not saying they would do anything nefarious, not saying that at all, but I'm just saying that's one of my, just by chance, you take somebody's cat, you don't check it properly, you miss the chip or whatever, and you spay neuter somebody's cat, or, or you misplace it, or it could be a problem, it's just me thinking out loud and I don't think they have any ill will.
Okay, um, Beth, are you, can you hear me? Beth Frank?
Can you unmute Beth, please?
Alright.
She's muted.
She's still muted?
She's still muted.
Beth, can you unmute Corporation Counselors, trying to ask you a question?
Okay, I think I'm...
Go ahead.
Okay, just wondering, are you in the state of Michigan?
Yes, Saginaw.
Okay.
We're not, uh, coming in as a outside organization. This group is being run by your local residents who wanna help these cats, who wanna help the city, and we are standing behind them to give them support and our experience and to reach out and use our 501(c)(3) to get grants to help for, for funding on this. It's always best to have the 501(c)(3) behind you. So that's what this is about.
Right, next question is, are your people actually licensed through the state of Michigan? Like animal control, like animal control officer status?
They're certified through Michigan Humane as, you know, feral, uh, community cat people.
Okay, namely through the contract we use in terms of, um, in terms of shelter.
Actually, Michigan Humane is not the only one that certifies in the state, All About Animals also does certification.
I know, I know, but it's the same, the same group, that's kinda what I'm trying to get at, okay.
I did have a question though, did anybody talk with our attorney that, the one we work with and who helps write ordinances?
Yes, I did, I communicated with him, uh, multiple times via email, and I also asked him to send me some sample ordinances, uh, that he is recommending, and I did receive them, I did read them over, um, depends on direction we decide to go in, if we decide as a body, as a council body, to make a change to this ordinance. At that particular point, I would forward these to our Corporation Council and our, um, uh, what do you call them, uh, city council persons, and then see if there's any changes we wanna make this ordinance once we're done with the study session.
She can also help you with, uh, feeding issues, she has a lot of experience in that.
And I, and I have one other question, if I may.
Go ahead. You, you, you're talking about Liz, right? Liz Holt, correct? Yep, okay, sorry, it's a she.
Beth, Beth, you used, uh, a distinction between community, uh, cats and feral cats. How would, how do you define feral cats?
Feral cats have, are, are not really socialized to humans. Um, in fact, when people say, one of the complaints is, well, we see cats all over the place. Well, if you're seeing them during the day, those are not ferrets because ferrets only really come out at night. Uh, they're too skittish, and so we have friendly cats out there that somebody dumped, and that's what you're gonna see through the day. It, you can tell, it, you know, when you take them into a shelter, it's really difficult to tell because they're all afraid, but friendly cats sometimes will, are a lot easier to trap than the feral ones because the feral ones are smart, they have, you know, they have streets, street common sense, and they know how to avoid things, but they can and they are trapped. And as far as paying, having the city pay for owners, uh, of, who have cats that want them spayed and neutered, you can tell when they come in, they have to come in in a trap. Typically, that's the case, I'm assuming Michigan Humane does that, they have to come into a trap. If these people in your community are trapping these cats, they can tell you where they're at and they can return the, the cats back to that place. Um, we're not gonna be taking anybody's own cat in to get them fixed, it's just not gonna happen.
Okay, and so basically, um, if, if I may, council chair and council members, um, you know, we could devise some sort of exemption, uh, with respect to an actual approved program. I would want to end up however, having, uh, the program, um, you know, part of the issue becomes funding with respect to this program because then you're going to end up incurring expense on something that essentially is not necessarily the city's idea, and it may also require us to end up using expertise from, say, Michigan Humane Society, which is now called Michigan Humane, typically they changed the name a few years back. So, uh, we could end up having something specifically for the TNR, uh, type of...
Save money.
Program.
You will be, you will be saving money on this because you're gonna have citizens that'll do the trapping. That's gonna free up your animal control people to do other things that really are more important.
Right, but, but the, the, the point that I was trying to make, I'm sorry, Ms. Frank, uh, is to the council with the idea that essentially, we could have some, something in terms of an exemption, but we would need to make sure that we would verify what direction to go in terms of the program, and that, but that doesn't necessarily mean we don't need the rest of this ordinance. Um, this is, these types of problems have been ongoing problems, I think I told people last meeting, I was involved in this going back to Mayor Canfield's administration, and we have routinely over the years had issues with respect to dwellings. Every once in a while, you get a dwelling that has to end up actually being completely decontaminated because of cats, it happens, I think it's happened, I've been involved in at least three or four of them, maybe five of them over the years. So this is something that, you know, can end up being a problem, and this type of situation is one where it's been an ongoing issue again. Ground feeding has been an ongoing issue for decades.
We're gonna go with, uh, Councilwoman Nancy Brier, she had a question.
I have a couple comments, um, I have cats, I am a cat liver, I currently have two. Of the four that I've had recently, three were feral, uh, one has died. So that one got replaced by another feral cat, so that cat would not be alone. However, they've been indoor cats, and they've had issues with neighborhood cats that may be your community cat. I called him Yao, cause that's what he always said. And, um, he was spraying my back door wall, tormenting my other cats. He also ruined a bedroom, um, screen, trying to get at them, he climbed up and tormented them when they were looking out the window. And I've had issues with my putting bread out for birds in the backyard, the cats, or the rats picked up the bread, came into my 2017 Fusion in the engine, and they not only ate the food, they left their remains, and they ate some of the wires. Cost me almost $400 for, to fix the repair on that. Um, but I still like cats, and if we could work something, I'd love to. Um, but there, there are the issues with the damage that they can do, which is the opposite side of this coin. And I do know for a fact, reading our backup materials with the cost that we spend monthly, that we do spend a significant amount every month when the guys have to take the cats to the Humane Society, get them fixed, um, and then bring them back to the neighborhood. I agree that when cats have been fixed, they don't create quite so many issues, but you do have the people that are experiencing unwanted things. I had a possum show up on my front porch one night, not pleasant. Um, but this is both sides of the coin, so there's a lot to think about here.
Okay. So, next, we're gonna go ahead and go to members of the audience, if anybody would like to speak? Yes, you have something quick, okay, quick.
Bill?
I'm sorry.
Are, and both, uh, uh, animal control officers.
Directors, well, whoever.
Isn't it, isn't it true that sometimes that there's, there's no shelter, or you, you won't have any place to, to drop the cats off? Have you ever been told, hey, we're full, we can't take the cats right now?
Not with our contract.
Oh, so that's right, the, but I've had the experience where I go to a shelter, they say, we're, we're full, we can't.
Yeah, we, we don't obviously get the, I'm not gonna say treatment, but they have to accommodate us. We had an issue recently, they were doing some movement around where we couldn't get a dog or two in, but it was just a misunderstanding, we normally don't have that issue with respect to dogs.
But as far as stray animals, there are a lot, lot, lot of stray cats, I mean, more than dogs, is that a fair statement?
In Dearborn Heights, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think I've ever seen a feral dog in Dearborn Heights. Seen him a lot when I worked in Detroit, but not, coyotes don't count.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you Director, Officer, appreciate it. Anybody from the audience wish to speak, uh, please state your name, city, street, and two minutes.
Uh, Robert Bunker.
So are you speaking as a officer, as an individual?
Oh, well, individual.
As a resident, I'm sorry, resident.
Well, former resident, but I grew up in Dearborn Heights. Right, Robert Bunker, Wyandotte, uh, Wayne County, I grew up in Dearborn Heights and graduated from Annapolis. Um, I have a suggestion for the ordinance, which would be to change it from not ground feeding to unapproved ground feeding, that way that it can be watched. And we have some kind of list and or sheet to be able to know who's in the city trapping other than us. Uh, technically, the state law from the Michigan Department of Agriculture states that nobody other than a shelter or an animal control officer can impound other animals or stray animals. Um, I do have those sections back in the office, but that, as for the reference or the other, we have no problem with it, we obviously cannot handle it ourself, but there needs to be some kind of control because just like the individual I had to deal with, we don't want another situation like that. So I have no problem with a unapproved, but they have to come in and register with us. No fee, no nothing like that, just hey, and then that actually turns into a resource for us as well. We can't keep, get through our, our list. So we have references or resources from other groups to help us, but it can't turn into a unrestrained, I show up, if you don't have any kind of regulation to it, you're gonna have people from other cities showing up stating they're from Dearborn Heights. But it can be changed to unapproved, in that way, there's some kind of regulation. But for every person that does it correctly, there's two or three that doesn't. And there, there are people, I will agree, there are people that do it correctly. They go out, they feed, they clean up, and they go, the problem isn't those people. The problem is the ones that don't. And I, as, animal control officers are the ones that have to go out on those calls. And you also end up with the people at the end of the year, when winter comes up and you get an increase in animal pickup calls for the people that have, can I finish? The people that have been feeding cats or other animals for the whole spring and summer, and now it's winter, they don't know what to do, and they're afraid the animal's gonna die, and they don't wanna take it into their house. You always get, for every city, you get an increase in pickups right before winter happens because they don't know what to do with these animals. But if you have some kind of list or unapproved, then we know who is doing it, we know who's coming in, they know where they're at.
Thank you, sir. Next up, come on up, you have two minutes.
Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights, um, I've got a bunch of things, but I'll try and get through it quick. Um, Nancy mentioned that we spend a lot with MHS, are you guys aware that the contract says it's like 4,800 per animal? It's being paid out like per month, but it says that that's how much we're supposed to pay per animal in the contract. You guys should double check that because that's been approved multiple years in a row. Um, I, I brought it up at the meeting before, I have an issue with the word indirectly feeding animals, and we talked about it briefly, um, you know, cause gardeners, someone who's not good with legal stuff is gonna see indirect feeding of any wild animal and go, well, birds eat the tomatoes off my tomato plant, can I not have a tomato plant now? So getting that better defined to say what would need to happen in terms of gardens, if you have a garden and stuff's falling, how fast you need to pick that up, do you have to have bird netting or deer protectors, whatever it is, that should be better defined in there if we're gonna leave the word indirect. I think it should just be gone. Um, would any of this, again, not a legal person, and I kind of bringing these things up just so you guys make sure it's written well, the cruelty to animals just says that no person shall fail to provide any animal or bir, bird with food, drink, shelter, or protection from weather. Couldn't this conflict with this? I could see someone saying, well, I'm just trying to follow this and not be cruel to animals. Um, and then how effective is this ordinance at actually stopping the rat issues? What's the data that backs this up, what's the evidence that shows that this is gonna work? A quick Google says that the best thing is making sure trash cans aren't broken. That's on the city to replace broken trash cans, if the trash people broke it or whatever, or if it's just older. Lots of people have broken trash cans. And then also cleaning up the yards in the places they live, the last meeting when that family was talking about a house that has been there for almost a full year with this terrible situation, that's the kind of thing that we really should be spending our time on fixing instead of debating a TNR program when there's a group that's willing to do it and to help out and to work with ordinance on getting it organized and work with them so that they're partners. Um, so I would just encourage that, working with them and really developing the ordinance so it's not just, yeah, let's go with the first thing we're given.
Okay, thank you, Rachel, anybody else, come on up, man.
Yes, my name is Victoria Ramazetti, I live on Monroe Street, and the problem that I'm having is I have a...
Sorry, city and street?
Uh, Dearborn Heights, Monroe Street.
Okay, thank you.
And the problem I have is, I have a neighbor that has a squirrel feeder up in the tree, it's a glass globe, about that big, it holds four cups of peanuts, the, out of the shell, it's up there filled daily, when it empties, it's full, so it's continuous feeding. Is, there's a bird feeder where the seed's on the ground. Um, I had rats, they burrowed all around my trees, so it's damaged my property. Uh, I had rats in my pool, um, Officer Abbott seen it on the footage of the camera, so he was able to get her into court, the court gave her a ticket and told her, you know, don't, you have to take everything down for six months. Now the six months is over with, she put everything back up, you know, so it's like, it's wasting the ordinance time, you know, that, what, it starts all over, you have to wait for the rats to come. I don't think they should allow like the squirrel feeders and that much feeding.
It's a homemade feeder too, right?
Yeah, well, she buys it, I got pictures of the feeder here.
Why don't you pass them around?
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's just, it's wasting, you know, the officer's time that why would they allow, you know, that kind of feeding? I take care of my property and it's like, it's very discouraging.
And they're renters, correct?
No, they own the house. So, thank you for your time.
Wow, thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience?
Hi, Sarah Malik, I'm on Outer Drive in Dearborn Heights, and I just wanna say, no disrespect, but the officers did give us an example of outliers, and, um, I've been doing this for close to a year, TNR-ing, and I've seen many starving cats. And I've had to take time to make sure that these cats, sorry, that the, these cats are vaccinated, TNR'd properly, and this is what our group is trying to do. When people are not trained or educated on how to properly TNR, they're opening themselves up to get hurt, they're, they're affecting all of us because we're trying to do this the right way. Um, with all due respect to the city as well, um, I've had a trap that was, a live trap that was given to the officers when they came out, came and picked up a cat from me, a feral cat, and when I asked for my trap back, they gave me the wrong one, which cost me money. Um, it's just, I just wanted to bring that up because I just feel people need to be properly educated on how to TNR, and I also think that people need to be educated on how to properly feed. Um, and then Councilman Ray was saying something about people taking their own cat. Well, please don't use those people as an example, they don't, they don't represent me or what we're trying to do in the city. And I just want to stress on the lack of education, this is where the problem is. When they're not properly educated on how to feed and how to properly TNR, then of course we're gonna have issues. TNR works, and I've seen it work, and I just wish you would allow us the chance to properly educate our fellow residents.
But just out of fairness, one of the concerns from the, I know the ordinance department slash city is that your organization is a brand new organization, obviously, and I... slash city is that your organization is a brand new organization, obviously, and I know I've not helped you, but I've been not involved, but at least talked to you, communicated with you about you guys putting this together, which is great. But then I know from the ordinance department's perspective, it's going to be, being that it's a brand new organization that you're starting out, how effective you are going to be to be able to do this. I mean, it's great if you guys had 400 people throughout the city, but the reality is, I don't know if you're going to be able to communicate that to enough people throughout the city to be able to be effective at what you do. And I do sympathize with your concerns, I get it. And I get about the humane thing, I totally get it. But that's probably, I presume, one of the concerns from the ordinance department, how effective you guys can be at doing this. But I know you're just starting out, which is good.
Yeah, if, if we're given the proper time and the proper chance, I'm sure that we would succeed in controlling the cat population. I've seen it done multiple times in certain communities. I've been a part of it, so I know how it works, you know? And so I just, I just think the public needs to be educated.
Okay, thank you very much. He's got a question, go ahead.
Hang on a second, you'll get your turn when you, if you want to go up. Well.
Okay, I'll give you a chance to move on.
You know, I didn't, when I, when I, what I said wasn't at you or any individual person, but we know how scammers work. Everybody gets scanned. And I can tell, I can assure you, there's going to be people out there that are going to use that for their own benefit. And, and, and I, I like Mr. Bunker's idea of people being registered, so when they do turn a cat in, at least they would know. Because you're opening up a big door for the city to pay a lot of money, that, there are scammers out there, just face it. I mean, people scam you for your Amazon account, and, and people, professional people that scam in the pharmaceutical business, doctors.
Well, we'll need, we'll need, just, maybe you can table this again, I don't know, I don't think you guys are voting today, but.
No, we're not voting.
But, but the other, the other thing I want to say is, you know, you catch these cats, you get them spayed, you get them neutered, you get vaccinations, but what, what does that, how does that stop that cat from, say, coming onto someone else's property and doing damage? Those cats have claws. They, they'll scratch a dog's eye, eyes out in a minute.
So is starving them okay, then?
Well, but, but I'm not saying starving them, but is it okay for that cat then to come onto someone's property, destroy their property, rip up their furniture with their claws, okay, and cost taxpayers money?
Again, with-
So it works both ways.
I understand, but the, again, that's what I call an outlier, because I've been doing this for a year, and I haven't, in my, in my experience, which is not much, but I haven't seen that happen.
To come to my house.
Okay.
I'll show you my, my, my outdoor furniture, okay?
So if you'd just give us some, some time to, like I said, I know you guys are not voting on this today, so let me discuss it with the group that I'm with, and let's see if we can-
Stay up there for a second, the young lady here had a question for you. Wait, I'm, I'm going to repeat that, so is that your main question? Okay, so she would like to know, how many are in your group?
Okay, so right now, we are collecting residents in our group, and we're in the process of obtaining more people to join us. Right now, I cannot give you a number, because there's so many emails, there's so many emails that we're still going through with people interested in joining our TNR group.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to announce your information. So the dedicated email for this particular group is D H Cat Coalition at gmail dot com. So D as in dog, H as in hat, cat, C A T, Coalition, C O A L I T I O N at gmail dot com. They also have a, a Facebook page, if I'm not mistaken, I'm trying to find it here. Do you have it memorized what it is?
Dearborn Heights Community Cats.
Okay.
I'll go on Facebook right now.
So Dearborn Heights Community Cats, is there a Facebook page?
I'm sorry, that's Cat Coalition.
Okay, Dearborn Heights Cat Coalition?
Yeah.
Okay, that's on Facebook, and then do you have a phone number for somebody, or?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So at this point, email D H Cat Coalition at gmail dot com. Thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Oh, how many people in your group so far?
That's what I, I said, we're still going through, we're still going through emails, and we're still going through messages, and I don't have the exact number for you as of yet. But that's not going to give an accurate number.
Right, yeah.
I do know some of the people have communicated with, they started, the original group, which includes Beth Frank, was about five or seven people, that's the one that initially started. But that's the starting group, they're just putting this together.
Yeah, those are the people putting this together, that's not how many are in the group.
Okay, so if, if somebody's interested, join that particular Facebook group or email. Thank you very much. Thank you. Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening.
City, street, name.
I am Rachel Alcatry Mashney, and I live on Whitefield.
In Dearborn Heights?
Yes.
Okay, you don't need an address, okay, go ahead.
And we have an issue with somebody feeding these stray cats, feral cats, whatever, community cats. And we not only have four regular cats going through our yard back and forth all day long and night, we have raccoons, I have a family of four raccoons. I don't know if it's a mama, daddy, and two babies, or what. We had four raccoons with a couple of babies. We have possum, and we have skunk coming into our yards. All because somebody is feeding these cats, you know? And they bring in the rats. All these animals bring in the rats. It's not about them feed, you know, it's not about cats, it's about all these other animals that are coming in because somebody is feeding these cats.
Okay. Anything else, or that's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, ma'am. Next up, city, street, name, please.
My name is Evelyn Marga. I'm a resident of Dearborn. I live on Kendall Street, off of Ford Road and Chase.
Okay, we don't need that, so, okay, thank you.
I am a volunteer with Providing for Paws Rescue. We have a separate entity, TNR program, it's financed separately from our rescue. We stand ready to help the city of Dearborn Heights with their, with depopulating their cat population problem. We have already recently been trapping in the city of Dearborn Heights. One of our trappers, Helen Gorski, has received, received a request from two homeowners on Centralia Street, one off of Warren, one off of Ford Road, and she trapped a total of 15 cats, nine feral adults, and six kittens. We received the six kittens into our rescue, they are now fully vetted and up for adoption. The nine feral cats were vaccinated and fixed and returned to the homeowners who are feeding them. We encourage best feeding practices, which requires that the feeders feed only at specific times during the day, not at all at night, and that food be brought up only from 30 to 60 minutes on their property and then brought up. This allows the cats to learn the specific time and place where the food is being offered, and they learn innately the proper time to come to, to eat. This facilitates our trapping abilities, because it'll, it, it makes for the cats to come, the feeder is allowed to, has the capacity to have the cats coming at a specific time and place, which allows us to trap at a high rate and in a short period of time. Most communities that are successful with depopulating the cat population institute or utilize cat rescue groups. It's the future of cat rescue, depopulation, and there are many, there are many cities that have been successful with the utilization of rescues.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'll have you go towards the end, just to make sure you give the resident, you had what?
Rob has a question for her.
Okay, come on, come on up quickly. I'm just going to have him ask, go, just say the question, I'll repeat it to her.
So, that's fine, and that's, what you have in place, you recommend, and you try to teach best feeding prac- prac- practices, what you have in place to enforce that? If they don't follow that, what do you have in place?
Okay, so the concern from the officer is, if we put that in place, what do we, what would we have in place as a city to try to enforce that?
You know, all of this is done without a cost to the city. When we are in the trapping neighborhood, we do canvass the neighborhood, because we are looking for people who are feeding cats or even sitting on top of cats that are unfixed and unvaccinated. We pass out flyers involving educating the people on TNR and best feeding practices. We need the support of the entire community to get on board with best feeding practices. This would involve putting out flyers, we even have a volunteer who's Arabic, who can do it in Arabic. We have, we, we've done flyers before, educating people. The city really needs to get on board in however way is most efficient in communicating to the residents, either by internet or newsletter or whatever, or handouts to institute best feeding practices. And then this attracting rats and other wildlife will stop, because you only have a certain timeframe that the person can feed, 30 to 60 minutes, and nothing overnight, ever.
Thank you, ma'am. Right, and also saying, without a way to enforce it, there's no way to make it happen. Go ahead.
I'm Dolores Swan on McDonald Street in Dearborn Heights. I had not intended on getting up here, and I'm sorry I was late to this meeting, I forgot about it. And I am a member of the Michigan Humane Society TNR program, and we were trained properly, never to feed at night and a certain amount of time during the day. But, and I am, I also want to say, I'm glad to hear our wildlife is returning. We, we haven't got rid of them all, like the opossums and the raccoons, that's nice to hear. But I don't understand, this lady said she calls the city, and you picked up her cats? Because I just take my cats to the Humane Society, they take them from me, it doesn't cost me a dime to have them TNR'd and ear tipped, and then I just return them to their colony. And, and I don't understand how the city pays so much, I don't get it.
I, I, you know, I'm at the $4,800 that was mentioned?
Yeah.
I don't have the contract in front of me, I'm not sure if it's that much, to be honest with you, and I put a note for myself, double checked that, I, I don't believe it's that much. Unless corporation customer, not that I'm aware of.
So every time, every time you guy, every time our ordinance or animal control takes an animal in, we have to pay? Oh.
Again, I don't have the contract in front of me, so we can't comment.
Okay, because I didn't understand that part. And then I was wondering about these ladies, you call the city to pick up your cats? Yeah. So now what do you do? You take it to the Humane Society yourself?
Yeah, I take it to Humane Society, all about animals.
Oh, different places, okay. Okay, I was just wondering how, I just wondered how-
We asked, it was just to both, for those that couldn't hear on Zoom. Okay.
That's what I was just wondering how the city got involved with picking up her cats.
We pay a base fee every month, and then when people come and claim their animals, we get money back, and they take it off the bill. And then there's, if there's wildlife, or if there's a court case or something like that, after a certain number of days, we could get billed for it. It's kind of, it's kind of, it fluctuates, if you notice, when they come through. You'll see of all, yeah, rollover or whatever, and I, I believe that with respect to the, the TNR, they have money, they have funding, MH does, that they use towards that. So it's like funded, and we don't pay extra for that.
Anybody else in the audience that, come on up, sir?
My name's Mark Reiman, I live on Gertrude Street in Dearborn Heights. I'm on the opposite side. I'm the litter box, that I can't stand it. These people, well, kind of across the street from me, right in the, they're feeding cats. I don't care if they feed the cats, take care of them. If you can't take care of them, come over to my yard three times a week and clean up the, the poop. You know, it's, it's unfair to me. I have no animals, but I love animals, I don't have any, but I shouldn't have to clean up the crap. It's just, it's not right. My wife's got a couple of gardens in the front, and that's right where they crap, and that's right in front of, right by my front door. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's not fair to, to me on that side of it. I love animals, I've had animals all my life. But if you're going to feed them, they should be yours. I thought, and I always thought that the feral cat, isn't that supposed, their, their job in the neighborhoods is to take care of the rat population, or the mice, or the rodents? Isn't that the job of feral cat, to keep them clean? Well, if you feed them, they're not going to do their job.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up, ma'am, of course. You want to get the microphone as close, you want to lower the microphone as close as you can to you?
Do close.
Bring it closer.
Get close.
There we go.
There you go. Oh, thank you. Helen Kowal, K O W A L, 6971.
Don't, don't, don't give your address, it's the street.
I don't care. Anyway, listening to everything-
What, what street and city, I'm sorry. I don't want to get in trouble with the clerks.
The problem here is the feeding. That's the problem. It's in any city. Just listening to what these people say. People feed, they think it's all right, that they're helping the animals. The other day, I have three city trees, maples, in front of my house. I got up in the morning, there was nothing there, it's all clear. Probably a half hour later, I looked out at the first maple, and there was a whole loaf of white bread sliced, scattered all over, broad daylight. This is like 9:30 in the morning. I thought, what is that? It looks like bread. But I wasn't dressed, I didn't go out. However, my neighbor, they checked, they checked it out. And they said, Helen, there's a full loaf of white bread, just to be fed to somebody, broad daylight, right on the front of the street. So it's, people stop, and they think it's all right, I'll throw this out. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for coming, ma'am, not before you leave. Again, I can't get in trouble with the clerk's office, because they need to document this, just a street only in city, please.
Okay.
What street do you live on?
I'm through.
What, what, what street do you live on?
I can't hear you.
What's, what street do you live on?
On Whitefield.
On Whitefield in Dearborn Heights. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here tonight.
You're welcome.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, next, I'm going to go to Zoom, we have Mr. Jamal, you have two minutes, come on on.
You want, you want to unmute him, please?
And, and please state if you're speaking as a director or as an individual. Wait, one second.
You got to unmute him, please?
Can you hear us? We can't hear you. You got unmuted.
You don't have your microphone on, Hassan.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
All right, and there's nobody else in the audience here, while I was trying to come on? He's unmuted again, can you hear us, Hassan? On once? On twice?
Hassan, can you? We can't hear you. You're muted. Unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm muted.
Go ahead, talk. We can't hear you.
Try your unmute.
Something's wrong with your speakers.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Sorry.
Probably your computer settings. Okay, so I'm, go ahead, you want to say something? Quick, 30 seconds, please.
So, since the concern is the rats, obviously, I just wanted to also point out, there are a few neighbors of mine that have had their garbage out for about three weeks now, and it's on the sidewalk, and I believe that that is concerning as well, and that attracts rats, and I just wanted to make sure that was-
And that's one reason why the city invested in bringing in a- And that's one reason why the city invested in bringing in, uh, garbage cans that we provide to all the residents, 'cause prior to that, uh, there was a major issue throughout the ci- well, I shouldn't say major, but there was an issue throughout the city, as far as rats are concerned, and through getting these cans, that's drastically minimized that, that issue, that a- all cities have, but the mayor and administrations work on minimizing this, and that's one of the reasons why the ordinance department's bringing this, 'cause I wanna make it clear, the ordinance department put together this ordinance not so they could get, you know, do something to harm cats, or dogs-
But it is, it is gonna harm cats, it will.
And, and that's where your concern is, and I respect that. But what I'm saying is, the ordinance department brought this, their ultimate and main goal is rats. Now, when we had the council meeting, a lot of residents, such as yourself, had a lot of concerns, that's why I promised you that I would do a-
Thank you for that.
-a study session, and that's what we've done here. And then, we'll see where we're gonna go from there, as far as when this goes on, when I put this on the agenda-
Sure.
-to be voted on. I can tell you right now, in my personal opinion, and I'll talk with the other council members, in all likelihood, I'm gonna kinda give you guys a chance to put your stuff together-
Thank you.
-give you a chance maybe to meet with the, uh, our ordinance officer, maybe our director, and as long as they're comfortable, and you're comfortable, maybe we could table this for a little bit, just see what, what can be put together.
I appreciate it, thank you.
But we'll see, but, I'm not promising you that, that's possible direction.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the audience? 'Cause if we see none, we're gonna go ahead and end this meeting. Anybody else on Zoom, seeing none? You had, you, well, you're a long-time activist, I'm gonna give you 15, 30 seconds.
Being activated lately, but-
Ma'am?
Okay, 15, 30 seconds.
Dolores on McDonald Street in Dearborn Heights. Um, and one of the issues about the rats, is the people that own dogs that don't clean up the dog crap. And that's all around my neighborhood, okay? All around. I think I'm the only one, well, me and my next-door neighbor, we're the only ones to go out and clean the dog crap. And it offends me, especially when my bedroom windows are open at night, 'cause it comes in and chokes me around the neck, the smell.
Sure, sure.
But anyway, um, so what is your resolution?
So, at this particular point, us as council members, we'll discuss which direction we wanna go with this, and then I will determine if we're gonna be putting it on the agenda and when. And, and again, small part of my head, I just wanna give the opportunity for this organization to see what they could do between them and the director, as long as everybody's on the same page, then we'll, we'll go from there.
Well, it's impossible.
At this point, nothing is decided.
It's impossible for 10 people to do this whole city, but you know-
Again, I wanted to give every possible side an opportunity to speak, and they have, then between everybody involved, we'll make a determination which direction we're gonna go. Thank you. Director, last one, and we'll be ending this meeting.
Just real quickly, again, this is about rats, it's not specifically geared toward cats or dogs, and I just wanted to clarify, I brought the request forward, I did not craft this ordinance-
Correct.
-just so you know.
Okay.
Um, I'm not trying, yeah, I'm not, and I, it's, I, I, I appreciate it, it, I think it's legitimate, and hopefully we can, we can figure something out that will be amicable to all parties.